Craig, I'm gonna make a couple of comments.
You're on camera, Craig.
I'm on camera, right? Okay. Okay. The Chiefs did alright, right?
Yeah.
But let me share a little tidbit here. Fifty years ago, I was in my, being assigned to my unit 'cause I arrived in South Vietnam. Really, South Vietnam. And we listened on the radio to the Chiefs winning the Super Bowl. Let's see if they repeat that again.
But you can do it from here, they can.
Yeah. I can do it from here. That time I can watch it.
Thank you.
Well, let's go ahead and get the meeting started with the national anthem. I would pledge allegiance. And then as soon as we're done, Jim Jenkins, who is a, is the National Chancellor for the VFW, will begin our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us bow to it. Oh, Almighty God, we dishumbe ourselves before you at this time. We thank you that you're a God that knows all things, that you are concerned about all things, and that you care about each one here and in our community. We think for this time that we can come together as leaders and citizens to discuss the business and welfare of our city. Just may there be harmony and oneness, and that we can, even if we disagree, we can agree to disagree in a good manner. So we commit this time into your hands, and may it be to your glory, we pray, in your glorious name. Amen.
We will start the meeting with citizens' concerns. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be, all issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak during the citizens' concern portion?
We would like to, please.
Just please come on up to the podium, give your name and your address.
There's four of us, so. My name's Nikki Hammer. I actually live-
And address, please.
Uh-huh.
And address.
That's what I was getting to. I actually live on 86th Street, which is the last street for the Bonner Springs High School School District, which is fantastic, because my parents moved me out here when I was seven. Best thing they ever did for me. And this is my daughter Leila and Lakota, and this is our friend Morgan. I'm gonna start, and then the girls have something to say. We're a little emotional, but we think it's important for you all to hear the youngster side. I say youngster, because I'm probably the youngest at the shelter, the, next to our other friends. Do you want to show their poster behind you? So, check all of it, so it's here. Okay. I'm a proud Bonner Springs, class of 1999 graduate, and I currently work as a special education parent at the high school. I am the mother of two amazing children, eight and fourteen-year-olds. As a mother and a parent, I think we all strive to make, do everything we can, excuse my emotions, strive to make our children better. Three years ago, the girls and I were living in Oklahoma and had to leave abruptly. It was the most difficult decision to this state that I've ever made. It was the most important, you know, as a parent, you try to protect your children from allowing people to harm them. And I never thought I would have to try, have to protect my children from their own father. Moving was extremely difficult. We prayed a lot. We're lucky for our family and our friends and our Bonner Springs community, our teachers. Were very helpful at getting the kids started. I, about three months after we moved, I was blessed with a special ed position at Edwardsville, where I worked for over two years, I believe. And then I've always wanted to work at the high school level, because I always felt, you know, more strength towards the high schoolers. Feel like I could do more for them. And so I got the job this year at the high school as a, as a special ed parent there, and I get to interact with a lot more children. I have amazing coworkers. The last three years have not been easy for S3. You know, we have a great community here in Bonner that's helped them, you know, get grades, homework, extra, you know, as a single parent, little parent, it's difficult. I'm sorry. So after the move, Lakota bounced back really quick. She got right in there. Well, my sweet girl in the back had a little bit more trouble. As a Native American family, you're told ball's life. You know, you play ball, you, well, Leila decided she didn't want to play ball no more. So, you know, there was some discouragement on, towards the family, from the family, especially down in Oklahoma. Your kid doesn't play ball, you know, and all that. So, um, she became very depressed. I was lost as a parent, had no clue how to make her life better. I tried to force her to get more involved in school, because there's so many great things through the Bonner School District for kids to do, so many clubs, so many, and I tried. And nothing really caught on to her. One day in March of 2018, our lives changed. We met a volunteer at the Bonner Animal Rescue. And that Sunday morning, we showed up to volunteer for two hours. And that, that two hours changed our lives. That day, my daughter gained her smile back. I found, we found what she was drawn to. She's not a ball player, she can play ball very, very well. But that's not where her heart is. And watching her spend the two hours with the animals and our volunteers, I cannot express to you as a parent, after three, well, after a really long time of being in pain as a family, what that, what that did to me as a mother. Just like I said, she gained her smile back, which for any parent, that's what you pray for. We began showing up every Sunday to volunteer. Lakota came with us, because I'm a single parent. And I will not touch litter boxes. I don't want anything to do with that maskiness. But for some, somehow, these girls get it done. Anyways, we began showing up every Sunday, and then it turned into more, more evening shifts and getting to know people, and, you know, the volunteers, and Leila calls them her shelter grandmas. She has hundreds of hours in the last two years working at that shelter. She goes to PetSmart almost every Saturday. She helps load up, load up kitties and adopts them out. She has a very good feel for people and how they, they just are. She could list every cat and what they, their personality is. Blows my mind. Leila has met some amazing mentors who have chosen to teach her. And as all of you know, learning is a gift. The senior volunteers and animals may never take the place that she's missing in her heart, that her father has left. But they absolutely show her the true meaning of unconditional love. Sorry, I'm almost done. I'm not gonna lie, I don't get it. I will not touch a litter box if my life depended on it. Anyways, but for some reason, they, they could do it. I don't understand how Leila, I'm just using Leila because that's what I have, you know, and that's what I got to see grow, that's who I got to see grow. But I don't understand how she spends hours holding a feral kitten while it's hissing and like trying to bite her face off. And it just, she works with them daily, like on a daily basis, and all of a sudden, they're not afraid anymore. And I get to see, not only anyone doing it, but my daughter taking care of this animal that's changing. She changes lives that way. I mean, it may not be adult lives, but you know, it's a, it's a life in our eyes. And my mind is just blown on how that happens. I've sat back for over two years and volunteered and watched my children grow. They've become kinder adults and better humans in our community. We have kids in our community that don't always make the right choices and have to do service hours. They work and they socialize with us volunteers. When they, I'm talking about the, you know, the court-ordered, you know, children that have to come down, and they choose us to do ser-, I say a Spawner Animal Rescue. And you know, I'm more of a set-back, like love on the kitties, but not get too dirty, but I'll do the dirty work outside, like clean up the yard and dogs and stuff. But I've watched some of the community, the, the kids in our community that have made mistakes. And they calm down and they work and socialize with us volunteers. They get to work with young honorable girls or boys like these two back here and have her just nagging at them the whole time. You know, "You didn't do that right," or "Get that dish done," or, you know. And I really, I've seen some of these kids come out of those two hours of that after spray painting City Park. And I'm blunt with my kids. I'm, I'm talking about kids, like high school kids. Once, you know, you have one, you have all. And I'm blunt. Why would you do that? If you want to write on something, there's dry erase markers. Like, come on out, you know, and I'm very blunt. So we have conversations with these children about what they've done. You know, and they, they, it's amazing to see them in what they do for these animals and the love that the animals give back to them. And they, I think some of them don't get the unconditional love that they're being shown. And it's just amazing to see them walk out of that two-hour session of service hours happy and joyful and feeling pride, proud. They were able to, the few that I got to watch in the last few years, they were able to feel cared about by our senior volunteers. And just because they made a bad choice doesn't mean they can't bounce back from that. At the high school, I have tons of kids approach me, dozens of kids approach me about wanting to volunteer at the shelter and asking how they could help. I have kids constantly coming up to me saying how amazing the two hours that they did go and volunteer, how it, great it made them feel. And I think a lot of them are, are coming to me because they don't have a lot of discipline at home. And so they kind of are driven to me because, first of all, I'll tell you, you're not doing something, you know, straight your butt up. And I'm the first one to tell, "Come clean some litter boxes, I'll teach you something." Because I don't do it. Anyways, oh, sorry. Leila was actually in the process of working with Key Club. She's on the key, we finally found something that she, she likes besides the shelter, and it's Key Club. So they were in the process of getting a, a small group to come down, like during an hour period, and work. And so, um, I have to be honest, I don't understand the political part of what's going on. We don't understand it, and we don't really want to get involved in that aspect of it. But I think it was important for us to come and speak. It was funny, because my dad was like, "Oh, Leila, you're gonna go and you're gonna protest." And Leila said, "No, I'm gonna advocate." And that's what she's, I was so proud. I was like, "That's right." You know, we have a right to say what we, we feel. But I want you guys to understand that, like, I don't understand what's going on, and I don't really care. Like, I mean, I care, obviously I care, or I wouldn't be here. But I want you guys to see what it is, how it is helping our Bonner Springs youth, at least one, two, and me. One thing I do know about Bonner Animal Rescue is that it has changed both of my daughters' lives and helped me become a better person. If we open up a place similar to Bonner Animal Rescue, I feel like we could get some of our high schoolers more involved, and it will continue to help our students become better humans in this crazy world and better community members. It would also allow them to learn compassion, unconditional love, hard work, and commitment. So this is Lakota, and she, the girls made a poster, which is some pictures of what we have done in the last two years. And this has Morgan, what Morgan and Leila are gonna say, but those pictures, if you guys want to share. Just, Lakota, do you want to say anything about your poster? Do you want me to hold it? Okay, she wants me to hold it, so she can tell you guys about it. So, whatever you want. Sorry. So this is a PetSmart picture. Some of Leila and the girl, some of the women at PetSmart, homecoming. Leila actually had to stop to see her grandmas, her rescue grandmas. And there, I forgot to tell you, Lakota, while, she can't volunteer yet, she does go and she reads to the cats. Her score went from 182 this year to 201, her math score in reading, by the way. So yeah, she says and she reads to them, and so does Bob, who's our last dog left there. But Morgan says, "Tell you about this little kitten up here." But we just kind of wanted to see, this is like the aftermath of the tornado, and a few of our community members came and helped us clean up the yard. This is just, my girls and I are about peace, love, and just being happy. And we try to reflect that any way we can. So Morgan's gonna ask something she'd like to say.
Hi, everyone. I'm Morgan. I'm 14 and a freshman at Bonner Springs High School. The Bonner Animal Shelter has been my second home and my source of happiness. In fifth grade, I believe, I had a side note with depression and anxiety, and I'm still struggling with it. But it's made me a better person. My mom always talked about how she always, every time I come home, she, I'd always smile. I was smiling more than often. It helped me came out of my shell and find what I love doing. I enjoy helping people and animals more than ever. I love working with the kittens and the dogs. Beak is the kitten in the corner. He came into the shelter covered in leaves. He was tending a tree. I gave him more than that, fed him, and warmed him up in blankets. And he fell sick in my arms. He began to trust me. And it really touched my heart. And I love and miss him every day, but he's in his forever home now. That's all.
Okay, I'm Leila. I'm 14 and I'm a freshman at Bonner. The Bonner Animal Rescue has helped me through some of the roughest times in my life. The people and the ma-, and the animals are amazing, and they give everybody unconditional love. I found what my calling is, and I found what I'm good at. I may only be a teenager, but with the help of volunteers, I've learned so much about animal rescue and about myself. They've taught me valuable life lessons that I will never forget. One in particular is that even though some people let you down and hurt you, there are always gonna be people who love and care for you. Those people will pick, will pick up the pieces and help put everything back together. We are all different, and we all have different stories. But we all came together because of these animals that we care for so much and that need our help. We're one baby family. These animals don't have a chance without us. I love Bonner Springs, and I love my high school. I'm sure I could go to another shelter. But I don't want to be a part of, but I want to be a part of making our community here in Bonner a better place. I have three years until my senior project, and I'd really love to be able to do about a shelter, with a shelter here in Bonner. Thank you.
I appreciate you guys listening to us. I know that there's been Bonner, the rescue, there's been, they've been here to speak to you. But I wanted to speak on behalf of the youth. We understand the process, and there is a process, and things have to happen and change. We understand that. But we, I just wanted you to be able to hear stories from the lives that the rescue has helped change. And I know these are just three little girls. Little, they're little to me, but, um, they're going to be awesome women, and I'm excited to see what they will do. We've already started doing one college work since we're at Bonner High School, so I'm super excited about that. But we appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I might add something real quick.
Absolutely.
First of all, thank you for coming to speak. And the community is better for having you here and contributing to it. Contrary to what you may read on social media, there is not a big conflict between Bonner Rescue and the city. The same factors that has led to Bonner Animal having to close their shelter down is what has also put us in the bind and working toward an impound. This is what we're working through a process right now. One, we need to make sure we have a place where we pick up animals, we can take them to. Secondly, when we're done, because we're trying to continue with a philosophy of not euthanizing animals unless it's absolutely necessary for maybe a vicious animal, something like that, or the animal's sick. We, one of the things that's on the agenda tonight is working out a, an agreement with Level 1 Humane Society. I think we are still open to working something with Bonner, with Bonner Animal Rescue. The problem right now is we're not in a position to start actually moving forward, I don't think, with taxpayer funding to help build a shelter facility. That's where we're at right now. But that's our, that might be an ultimate goal down the road, but right now, our first goal is to make sure we're able to take care of the animals and both from picking them up, impounding them by state statute, as well as in a place we can put them at afterwards.
Absolutely, and I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, we don't read or believe anything on social media. Honestly, I speak to my children without. And so as I told you, we respect the process, and we understand the process, and there is a process. My kids, of course, we, it's all through school that the shelter, and we just say, "Just hold on." That's what we tell them. We are not, uh, we're not trying to put any, but I, we felt like it was important for you all to hear from the youth and what it's done for them. And so like I said, I appreciate the process, and we understand the process, at least my children and I do. And we just thought it was important for, you know, I try to teach my kids to stand up for what they believe in in a positive way. And I feel like this was a very powerful message that they could do, at 14 especially. And the fact that Morgan came along with us was fantastic. And so I'm really just proud of you most for being here. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council under citizens' concerns? If not, we will move on to consent agenda. We have the minutes of December 16th, 2019. We have claims for city operations and claims for public housing authority operations. Is there anything that would like to be pulled by the audience on the consent agenda? If not, staff, council, anything to be pulled? If not, then I will accept your motion.
Does the mayor make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written?
It moved in second. Any concerns, comments? If not, vote please.
Yep.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Burley?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That takes us on to old business. Ordinance number 2487 was tabled last meeting. We want to get a proper markup for all council members to see. So who from staff will be presenting? ACO? Hey, Anthony.
Hey, me, Kettering, animal control officer. We have a overhaul of the animal ordinances, kind of switching up some things, making it a little easier to read, helping me with enforceability. Have some additions for tethering restrictions for extreme weather. Chickens, if we had no, nothing in our tax ordinance about chickens or livestock or anything, no mention at all. So that kind of gives us some guidelines to go on there. You have any questions that you have to answer?
Let me start. A question on the tethering. I thought in the previous one, I didn't see it there, but maybe it's here. Is that you shouldn't, you can't tether in the front yard.
Um, we don't have anything. I mean, it has to be so far back from like a public walkway or roadway. So as long as it's a certain number.
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah. So the new ones will restrict it if there's severe weather or conditions over cold, heat, any sort of storm warning or anything. It just, so people bring it often, a little bit sensitive in those weather.
How do we, uh, what forces? Is it about the tethering still?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Curtain?
Well, like the weather and the tethering, how do we force that with our?
Let's say there's a, let's say there's a 4A warning for it's coming out. We don't find out someone that has it on, it's covered outside. We just simply go and cover it. Yeah, there's 4A warning, you bring it on in.
Okay. Mr. Reese, anything else? Oh, Mr. Good.
I was tickled at the other animals list. Yes.
Elephants.
Elephant. Yeah.
I mean, never know.
A lot of it, well.
Anything else?
No, I'm sorry, nothing else. This took an awful lot of-
I'm gonna go skip my stuff right now. So I've got a whole bunch of stuff there. So I'll let you go ahead and go next. Sure.
I was impressed with how much work I know this must have taken to look at, okay, we're pretty good, okay. Detail, and for the protection of animals. So much in there is the caring of, yeah.
You got anything else?
No, I wouldn't dare.
Mr. Thompson? Mr. Maggie?
I just wanted to say thank you for your service. I know you're on our street quite often, so I appreciate all the help.
Mr. Shane? Anything? I've got several things I'd like to, that's why I kind of, I figured I'd go last. Just one simple one, first of all. 2-125, the rescue of animals from vehicles. So that was, it gives, basically indemnifies the police officers, so that way hopefully they would not be held responsible. But that would not cover private citizens.
I believe there's a Kansas statute that allows private citizens to do that, but they just have to notify police first.
Oh, but then you have-
So this is just kind of setting out, like if we enter a vehicle and take a dog from a hot vehicle, then we're taking it to the vet immediately, leaving it over the owner. So it just kind of firms up what we're required to do.
Gotcha. Okay. And then 2-201. And what we're looking at is a combination of both, uh, let's see here. If I can find the right. My apologies for, it has to do with the registration tags. And I wrote down the letters here. What I'm looking for is, we used to, we had a section F, which hasn't been omitted, which was every owner harbors, it has to do with the late fees. But then also now, a section I has been added. An addition, and now is added an additional dollar amount that's being proposed?
Um, to people from, until March 1st to register their animals. So if they register after March 1st, it'll be a $10 penalty.
Okay, so it's basically, it's what's happening in F. You're just wanting to specify the dollar amount. The, I know in the past, we've tried to keep dollar amounts out of the ordinances because we passed those as we did in December with the fee schedule. Would the wording be better changed here to not have an actual dollar amount in it?
I mean, there's still a contradiction. Because that says, if the registration fee a per month or portion of a monthly fee, whereas I is a straight flat dollar amount.
So that's why I'm thinking there might be some- So that's why I'm thinking there might be some cleanup on F and I, between those two. You agree?
If we take the dollar amount added, would be inconsistent with what we do.
Yeah, and then if you just change the portion of a month penalty fee, it used to be like a schedule that'd go up, and up an amount every month.
Yes, so basically, it went, I think it was the amount of the actual fee, it increased every month, what the normal life fee is. So, yeah, if we just change the wording so that reflects what's already, you've already passed dollar wise, that'd be great. Back to, and I noticed there were several sections, but if we focus on two dash one one five. I noticed we are changing the number of days, where this is something that was passed several years ago, where we increased the number of days from, to seven, but I notice now it's being, wanting to be decreased back down to four. And is there a reason why we want to decrease it to four?
That's what it's always been for animals that don't have any ID cards whatsoever.
It's concurrent with the Animal Control Act of Kansas. It's what we're making it actually.
So we're trying to make it a little bit more standard?
Yeah.
I mean, okay. Get down here, I know, a lot to do for you, not too much more, but the next one here's going to be a little bit, down here. Two dash three oh four is where I'm going. I'm sorry, that is the wrong number. It's, well, it's section, I'll show up at two oh four, but it has to do with section, I don't know, it's because we've had two of them labeled two dash three oh four. I guess you reuse some numbers. So, following two dash, what is now labeled two dash three oh six, there was a two dash three oh four which covered vicious animals.
Okay.
Now I notice it's been legislatively taken out there, added section three oh seven, which gives it more of a definition of vicious animal, but then further in there, it's, we had not allowed vicious animals to reside in the city, but this now allows vicious animals to now be retained in the city under a whole set of guidelines. The question is, why do we, why have we changed to what now vicious animals be allowed in the city? Is there a reason for that?
Two dash three, was that?
Yeah.
Three oh seven. Thirty-three.
Yeah, thirty-three.
Okay. Declaring a vicious animal.
Yeah, it was on thirty-three, there was a two dash three oh four vicious animals, and then three oh seven was added, as well as, I think, uh...
Three eleven is the one.
Yeah, the three eleven was requirement by the owners, so also now we've allowed them to start retaining and keep vicious animals within the city limits.
When this reads, it says the office will declare the animal to be vicious.
But if you go down to two dash three eleven, now we have requirements by an owner, which allows a vicious animal to now be retained within the city limits. I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
If you actually look at the clean version of two three oh four, it says in subsection E, it shall be unlawful to keep, possess or harbor a vicious animal within the city limits. Dangerous animal which is killed with high serious physical harm to any person. These are descriptions. In the markup, I see what you're saying, there was two versions of the markup, and I think one of them got picked up today, but there's, you know, the clean version two three oh four, it prohibits, there's some, basically the same language for a dangerous animal, that hasn't quite reached that vicious status yet.
Right, we added that with changes back in the early.
But two three oh four prohibits a person from having a vicious animal.
Two three oh four is also falconry in that law restriction, so we need some numbers to clean up what it looks like.
Three eleven. So if you see two three oh six, dangerous animals.
Yeah.
And then right underneath this is two three oh four, so it should be two three oh seven, vicious.
Oh, there it is.
Three oh four.
That's thirty-one.
Did we have any write-up in this against pickles at this point?
No. You did write against the second page?
Page thirty-three.
Against what?
But the final copy does not, does not show law on vicious animals. Okay, that was a big concern of mine, because I know that was, that was real important back then.
It is not, it also gives the power to the animal control officer and, or police officers to, under certain guidelines, to identify animals vicious before it had to be court ordered, which was, which can become problematic at times.
Okay. Well, that finishes up my questions, is there some other questions?
Yeah, another one I had talks about domestic animals, horses, cows, and pork, which is fine on agricultural property, but is there also a twenty-five foot setback on the twenty-five on the agricultural property or not?
I believe so. I believe that's for maybe public walkway or roadway.
Right.
The state of Kansas has a lot of different rules and regulations for agriculturally zoned property, given its agricultural base, so animals, like Bonner, where we have a lot of areas that are more probably rural, in the outlying areas, yeah, there's going to be differences in terms of what we can enforce on those areas. Just by way of example, not to the mighty waters, but you know, code enforcement as far as grass and weeds is different in agricultural areas than it is in residential areas. So again, most of this is meant to be geared towards being less offensive to live in the city, if that makes sense, as far as ensuring that any type of farm animal or typical farm animal is, is in an area that's suitable for that type of animal. And again, the state typically has a lot more enforcement ability than the city does.
Just occurred to me, having sitting here, not having done it for a few weeks, I did do things a little bit out of order, I apologize. We should have given the citizens a chance to comment on it, so I will do that at this time. Are there any citizens that would like to comment on the changes to the ordinance? If so, please step forward to the podium. Before going farther, let's go and give a motion on the floor, we should have had that on the floor as well.
Mr. Mayor, or, sorry, Karen, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two four eight seven, Animal Control Regulation, incorporating the discussion.
Okay. Okay, when you say discussion, well, I'm assuming that's often asked, staff.
I might suggest that we retable this issue so we can clear a part of, and this is just for your guys', and everybody else's understanding, this is about a year and a half in the making of trying to get this ordinance, entirety of this ordinance put together, so you're seeing somewhat of a reflection of having too many cooks in the kitchen, to use that old saying.
Let's get it right first.
What we'll do is we'll go back, we'll get the number incorrect, and you're seeing, again, I think you probably got two versions of the, of this, that some have been slightly changed over the course of the last, again, year and a half. I will say that what we are intending to do is to try to get this, this ordinance, which I don't think has really been, seen any substantial changes since nineteen eighty-nine, up to date with what the state recommends to legal municipalities, puts together some recommendations, so I mean, we're trying to incorporate those, as well as just understanding our own unique situation as far as being kind of on the urban rural divide here, and as you heard, we do deal with some things that we just haven't had to deal with in the past, one of which would be urban farming and chickens in the backyard, things like that.
Buffalo, don't, you know, they call it bison, but don't some places have buffalo around?
Yeah, I, it's tomato, tomato.
Okay.
As somebody who's from South Dakota, and everybody in North Dakota calls bison, bison, I call it a buffalo.
Don't we have some, do we have any farms that have buffalo?
Around the city.
No.
We have alpacas, we have llamas, we have goats, cows.
They had us, we kissed two on there one time.
No, the hoes that I know of.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we pretty much, all the questions were really answered with the exception of just the correction to the fee.
Yeah, I think we, we need to clean up the fee and then just generally clean it up and then give you all a clean version that has the numbering correct. I think we should be finally, so this is more just having a lot of different numbering incorporated into some rough versions, we'll get you a clean final draft.
Karen, we need to...
Well, I was going to ask the city clerk if we need to, if they can withdraw their motion.
Did you go with the second? Did you withdraw?
Yes, would you like to?
Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
Would you, would you withdraw your second? Okay, then I will entertain a new motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to table this. Next meeting.
No more discussion, so, go please.
Yes.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Gerlee. Yes. Stevens.
Yes.
Maggie.
Yes.
The motion to table has passed.
Thank you, Officer ACO Anthony, we appreciate all the hard work, and we, we feel like we kind of fit you a little spot, we are criticizing, we just want to make sure it's right, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
That takes us on to the next item. You probably saw, for new business, item number one, the Leavenworth County Humane Society Agreement. And staff?
As you know, Great Plains SPCA greatly increased our fees for taking animals, so the chief and I met with Crystal Blackbeer of the Leavenworth County Humane Society, who has agreed to enter a contract with us for a hundred dollars per animal, to transfer animals on a case by case basis for six months. So we're asking to approve that contract so we can use that to start sending some more out to the landowners to them.
Anything else, staff? Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak on this subject? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between the Leavenworth County Humane Society and the city for animal sheltering services.
Second. We'll start here with you, Ms. Gerlee.
Am I misremembering that it was fifty dollars the last time we heard about this? No. I was remembering, thank you.
Yeah.
And what instance would we need to transfer prior to the designated hold period?
With the animals injured and needs immediate medical care, one of them, we would use our local... I mean, because, like, our back home is closed on Tuesday, here in town, so it's like, I just don't know, we need that verbiage, I'm curious about that.
Yeah, what were some of the other limitations that they would propose on this for not transferring an animal?
For not transferring?
Yeah, I mean, they would propose on this, which is, well, where are we bringing this animal, A, here in the room, no, that's, duh, duh, duh.
It's really a case by case basis based on their facility, they're providing service for all Leavenworth County, so if they don't have enough room, that could become an issue. Depending on the scope of management that animal needs, that could become an issue. As she said, this is a six month case by case basis, so it gives us a little bit of time to try to work through this problem, but it is a location, starting using the other.
Okay. Mr. Reese?
Yep.
Wood.
I want it totally understood that this is a six month thing and that we are still looking for a place to Bonner Animal Rescue. I really, I truly do, because it's within the community and it's, it's a strong organization within the community, and I just want to see it back somewhere.
DeHans.
Yeah.
Mr. Maggie?
Sean, where do we sit on being able to add additions to the budget, as this is obviously a passionate thing with the...
Which part of it?
I guess...
Like the capital building or the operational?
I guess either or.
Really, as the chief alluded to, this buys us a little bit of time. I think right now we're dealing with, on average, we're, we're having to take about seven animals for adoption monthly, so what we are trying to do is, and I believe Kendra reached out to the two vets here in town to see if we can still utilize their services for impounding, so again, there is a minimum hold time, which is required under state law. From there, the city is able to do with that, that includes property of the city effectively, so then we get into what do we do with the animal for, at that point. Again, we typically have taken animals by and large to SPCA, when they raised their fees to eight hundred and fifty dollars per animal, up from eighty-six, that has changed the conversation dramatically. The chief has been looking into a facility, which is the potential of retrofitting South Park, that's not to say that's the only solution, but that is a, a solution that is being looked at. Again, this, this buys us time to figure out the adoption part. Part of what I think still needs to occur is a public discussion, which really hasn't taken place, and, and that comes by way of maybe having some type of, to use a planning term, a charrette, where we sit down and say, having more of a public conversation and dialogue to say, where do we want to spend money or do things? Does the city want to be in an animal shelter scenario? Because again, we're talking about two things, we're talking about impounding, and then we're talking about what we're doing after impound. So right now, we were kind of up a proverbial creek, because we weren't really doing anything for impounding, and we reinforced that relationship with the two vets here. Leavenworth allows us to do adoption. The cost, I don't know, that's, the chief's looking at South Park, as I alluded to, we don't know what that's going to take to get it to that level. There are certainly groups, Bar is one of them, that have expressed their interest in helping facilitate that by way of donations or otherwise to get that going. That's still an option, you know, the, the other option that's been brought up is, is the city just want to build a new facility. That obviously comes as a cost as well, but we, again, we are, I think, still trying to figure it out, and then, of course, we've talked about before, the operational costs annually, or what that would take to do those types of things, if the city were to take on the impounding, and then the, the potential of giving the adoption, and there's always, there's a lot of different ways to handle this. Right now, I think, as I've talked about, at least internally with my staff, is I think this allows us to take a step back and maybe take a breath, and then figure out exactly what the best way is going about. At the end of the day, if we remain step vets in the goal, which is to ensure that there's, the public and the animals within the city are cared for, that's the goal, it's not any other thing than just that, is the safety of the public. I, I think we can maybe come into this a little bit more clearly.
Takes the house off being on fire too.
Right, and that's, yeah, we're not, we're not trying to drink from a fire hose here, this is, again, there are some options, none of them have been totally vetted, not everybody has stepped down and tabled, I talked about this, not all stakeholders have really been involved. The best time to do these things is part of the city budget, again, if we're going to talk about operationally what we're going to start to do, then we've got to talk about what we're not going to do.
Correct.
And then we've also got to figure out, again, if we're going to have a two hundred thousand, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, or if we did a, you know, a, a large facility, you know, we're talking millions.
Are we at like twenty thousand new feet of open space on our brand new building?
We could certainly look at incorporating that within it. We could certainly look at incorporating that within it. I'm not sure if that would be the best price for it, but, um, yeah, that's, again, what we're trying to do is ensure that we're following the letter of the law, and we're, we're doing what is correct from that standpoint. I think council, public will have to engage on the monetary aspect of this and what we're willing to do from, from that standpoint. But again, we've got a little bit of time to hopefully sit back and evaluate people more early than rushing into something.
So, this gives us six months to check, basically, for the...
I would say, I wouldn't take all six months, but it gives us, it gives us some time. Like I said, the, the big thing, again, with South Park is, you know, the location, that was brought up as a, a solution, because it's otherwise, otherwise kind of unutilized building. The city owns the land, that's not to say that's not the only place that the city owns land, but we don't own a lot of land, as we talked about before. Repurposing an old building, but the question really comes down to what's it going to cost to redo that versus just putting up a steel frame building with some panels in it.
Yep.
So, we were...
Do we have a rough estimate, what it would cost? She just said rough. I'm not asking for you to say it, but for South Park, did we have a rough estimate?
I, I have no, I mean, it's, it's tough, because we've got, just to illustrate some of the issues, we've found there's, you know, there are issues with South Park as a facility goes, that would need to get addressed regardless of, of the current state of affairs. I don't know, I can tell you that it's, you know, it's not, it's probably six figures once we start getting down to it.
Anything else?
Thank you for answering such a...
No, yeah, I, I always do.
Shannon? I was just gonna ask real quickly, I did notice that you mentioned about the strictly trial basis for the next six months, is there some concerns on the Humane Society's part that they're limiting this just to six months?
They, they don't know if they're going to be able to handle the volume of animals that adding us in, maybe in addition to what they're already providing service for. So, again, it's a case-by-case basis. We're hoping this is a good relationship and it works out well, you know, throwing the six...
Also, we picked up four hundred animals, so, and then actually...
That'd be a problem. You know, the biggest issue that I've talked to them about is if an agency, Lansing Police Department, for example, has a bike case, we're going to have priority. So, that's what we're going to run into. The six month is a good thing to work from, but as the city manager said, it could be a month. Moving forwards, so, sure, the water.
And I think, kind of continue a little bit with that discussion that you and Sean were having, I think one of the things also to consider is that, you know, as council members, elected officials, we have a fiduciary duty to watch out for taxpayer funds, and the reason a lot of times Humane Societies do not request or don't usually want taxpayer funding is because they want the ability to run their shelter the way that they want, they want to take animals from outside the area. If we do it, we may have to say, because it's taxpayer dollars, they have to restrict those animals strictly from Bonner Springs, and that may not be what they want. So, this is some of the things we've got to work with and deal with, so. Any other questions, concerns?
Do we have a plan, I'm sorry, do we have a plan B if Leavenworth Humane Society says no to any of that?
We continue back with what we were. This is going to kind of open our ability up to go back to services as have occurred and historically. If they end up coming back saying, we're done, we're going to have to re- decrease in that service level again until we find another solution, because we're going to be back to, can you help us out on this one? Can you help us out on this one? Can you help us out?
Similar question, just what do the other cities do around here? Is there somebody else besides Leavenworth going the other directions?
No, everybody in Leavenworth County pretty much uses the new Leavenworth County facility where they own their own facilities. That's the biggest. Cities, as we develop and we expand, we're going to have the demand of those services, and the city manager hits it a lot, what services are we going to provide? As the city expands to One Hundred and Eighteenth Street, I would anticipate animals being built out there. I mean, there's going to be a cause and effect, so, as a city, we've got to start evaluating what we're going to do next, what's the next step for us.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, vote please.
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Maggie?
I need clarification, but I'm looking at the document, is this just a Leavenworth Humane Society agreement?
Six months.
No, six months, thank you.
We're going to allow the city clerk, the city manager, to execute the agreement for six months.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to, I remember, oh, we are off a little bit. Item number two, water plant alternatives review contract. Staff? Anybody? Ford, CCO.
Frank Gephardt, Public Works Director, going to give Matt a break here a little bit. Essentially, what I wanted to talk about in this agenda item is a contract with Black and Beach to explore and nail down in detail costs for water plant alternatives and things of that nature. You may recall, last year, 2019, about mid-year, we had finished up the master planning for the water, and we had some discussions, more than one actually, related to what direction should we go. Based upon those discussions, we were able to put money in the 2020 budget, and we went ahead, we, the Public Works went ahead and pursued a request for qualifications to actually do that kind of work. And we had about six consultants who responded. We did a formal evaluation, and Black and Beach Corporation was the successful candidate. And the objective really of the work that we want them to do is produce something essentially before June first, that's just very detailed, very comprehensive, so that we can have that discussion with you folks, probably more than once, about where you would like to go with the information that we anticipate they will produce with this contract. So, we're looking here to recommend a motion to approve the engineering services, and I entertain any questions they have about what we're doing or what...
Anything further to add from staff? If not, anybody, citizens, like to speak on subject, Mary? If not, then I will accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Chairman, I make a, make a motion, I'm making a motion to approve an engineering services agreement with Black and Beach in an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred million.
Do we have a second? Second, okay. Mr. Thompson, second. Let's open the discussion this time over here with you, Mr. Shannon.
This is with the intent of staying in the water business from Bonner Springs, correct?
It'll have that option, but it'll also have at least one or two other alternatives for you to consider.
Gotcha. Is one of those expanding our services? I know we had mentioned other options of using different areas of the city and that type of thing. Is that going to be included in any of this?
Well, the, the only ones that come to my mind are perhaps utilizing Water One, what that would cost, and comparing that to the other obvious one, which is building our own plant to go ahead, and comparing those in detail, both operational and construction-wise.
What was it that we just recently, I thought we had that, we did that last year?
We did a master plan, which kind of brought this to everybody's attention, but it did not nail down the actual cost in detail.
Gotcha.
Since this is expected to probably be in the millions.
Correct.
We thought it was prudent to just, we tried to get focused just by those costs and bring that back for additional discussion.
Okay. That's the clarification, thank you. Any other, any other sort of... Gurley?
You said, are, were the other vets higher or lower? What was the qualification that pulled Black and Beach out?
I would, and by the way, there's two of them here representing Black and Beach, if you had specific questions you wanted to ask them. I'd say there was at least five or six components to the evaluation. One is, have you done this before? Clearly, they stood out as, as very qualified in that respect. We didn't actually talk about money until we selected the top three candidates. Then we, they happened to fall out at the top candidate, which was very close with number two. But we started our discussions about money then, after we had made the selection based on qualifications.
But that's to give us kind of the clear decision points of, should we be in the water business, should we not be in the water business?
That's what we hope to produce by June first or before, so that we can come back here for that discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Reeves?
It sounds like an awful lot of money for this, but I'm just hoping to get some clarification on, and I've got a little bit from you on why that's going to cost so much, but I'm, do you gentlemen have anything you can help clarify why it's going to be a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars?
Got your scope, maybe?
Yeah, sure.
Come on up, Jim.
So, there's, there's really six...
Quit and introduce yourself.
Sorry, I'm Jim, with Black Beach. Thanks for having us here tonight. There's going to be basically six primary components of, of this study. The first one really is to look at the water supply in terms of what your water rights are, and then ultimately, what are you going to need based on the master plan with regards to demands? And then, depending upon the treatment technology, there's different waste streams that are resulting from that treatment process, so we'll consider that also, to make sure that you have one supply that, that you're going to need for the future. We'll also be looking at the performance of your existing wells. There's also going to be an evaluation of the physical properties of those wells with regards to their proximity to the river, as well as the screen gap, because right now, everything's classified as being groundwater. The requirements for treatment would change if they were to be reclassified by KHE as being under the influence of service water. So, we want to make sure that we, we understand that and not that KHE would come back at some time in the future and make that change after you make potentially a, a large investment. So, that's the water supply aspect of the project. The next thing would be to look at different treatment technologies, and we're proposing to look at three different treatment technologies to meet your treatment water quality objectives. And we understand softening certainly is one of those, but it's also going to be looking at the robustness of the process with regards to future regulations and how those might change to make, again, sure that if you make a large investment, that you're going to be able to meet those future regulations down the road, okay? So, after that evaluation of the different treatment technologies, we'll be having workshops, there'll be a preferred technology that will be identified, and then from there, we move into the phase where there'll be what we call a design memo, preliminary annual report, and that really establishes the site plan, the, the building plan, the layout of the, you know, the, the equipment in the building. We'll be looking at hydraulic profiles, we're going to be doing some geotechnical work. You know, the big question is, is with the geology out there, doing the heat foundation system, where you'd have piers going down the bedrock versus a spread footing system, there's a significant difference in capital cost. And so, we are going to have a form done so that we can assess that. So, we're trying to provide price certainty, so that there's no surprises, okay?
Change orders.
Exactly, exactly. So, so those are, those are two that are free, I'm sorry. The next one then is, as, as Frank mentioned, is to look at a wholesale supply from Water District Number One. We, we certainly have very, a lot of knowledge of their sixty-inch pipeline that runs just over on the east side of town, we were the designers of that system. And so, we're going to be working with their staff, with your staff, to really understand what that rate would be to make the connection, and then what the consumption costs would be, so that we can kind of compare the two and present that to you, so you can make an educated decision, okay? That's four. The, the fifth one is to take the information with regards to these capital cost improvements and the, the annual operating maintenance costs, and get that back into your rate model to understand what are the implications then to your, your customer, to your ratepayers, okay? That's the fifth thing. And then, last but not least, how do you fund the project? And that's the other thing we're going to assist with, is to identify different funding mechanisms. What are the merits of each of those funding mechanisms? Again, so you can make a very important decision, what is the best for the city of Bonner Springs?
Thank you. Don't go too far, Jim. I was just going to ask real quick there. I was... Oh, you got some else?
I was just going to say, that explained a whole heck of a lot that I was not getting into already, what we're going to be doing. I think I'm with you now, okay? And I especially liked the part about limiting the change orders.
You're on camera, by the way.
He's our change order troll.
He did not say there would be a limit.
I was, I said, I, I didn't, and I didn't say it that way, I said, limited, yeah.
My water softener contract's out next month, so if you can...
So, June first is not quick enough.
I was going to ask on the operational side then, does that also, besides all the cost and feasibility, does it also cover personnel? Because I think there's been, there, it's been, I think, expressed many a time that we're...
It's an issue.
We're very, we've got issues with personnel and staffing.
Yeah, we, we would provide some recommendations for the staff, and that would be required based on whatever the treatment technology is. Some technologies would require, you know, more staff support for, for the facility. So, we'll provide that information in the evaluation that would be considered.
You know, it's a, it's a big amount, I think, for many of us, I'm sure we looked at them, it's a, it's a large amount to swallow.
It would be a lot, but they've helped me, you know.
It might be worth investment if we're talking about, do we stay in the water business or not? Any other questions or concerns from anyone? If not, vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Dip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for being here. Onto item number three, Government Services Center, change order request.
Okay.
On to you.
You'll see that within the memo, we've got a few different change order requests listed. Each one of those are detailed. Generally, I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six change orders with this, which would amount, our request, which would amount to change order five totaling about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars in total. You'll find most of these are due to unforeseen conditions, as noted with each change order request. I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions, but I also have KBS and SFS here, if you have any specific questions about any of those change order requests and exactly what is occurring with each one, but at the end of the day, we're recommending approval of change order five totaling all those change order requests.
Any other input from staff at all? If not, any body from residents, citizens who'd like to speak on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve change order number five for the Government Services Center project.
Second. Okay, I'll start, we'll start with you, Mr. Reeves, go ahead.
I always have.
Get it out right away.
But, you know, I understand, and I've been over there, and I've looked at stuff, and I, I know there's things I can't see. I was hoping, though, initially, that more things could be discovered, so we wouldn't have this, but I'm, I'm trying to be understanding here and comb it, I guess. We're still under budget, I believe.
We are, yeah, so there was a, it's, oh, I believe it was about ten percent of the project cost was set aside for these types of contingencies, so we, we still have just about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside for contingencies.
I think they were...
They put the budget...
They ran some Ronald, that's what the... Thanks.
Real quickly, can I ask a quick question on that, this parcel of seven thirty, is that before these come out or after?
That was, this will be with, seven thirty is what we have remaining right now with the prior four.
Before this is approved?
Yeah, so this is not included, a hundred and nineteen coming out with...
So, this is, this passes, will be down to just barely over six years, right?
I definitely like the picture with the drone, and I thought that was neat. And the fact that there's something called cladding and your sister something, and she explained that to me very well, and saddle modification. Okay.
Do you want to explain those terms real quick?
No, I looked them up.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shannon? No other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Gerlach?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we're getting close now to wrapping it up, guys. End games.
Thank you for the photographs too, because we get to see things.
City managers report.
Just a few quick reminders. We will be closed on the 20th of January for Observation Martin Luther King Junior Day. Back to business Tuesday, January 1st. Also, the library, the city library does this every, I believe it's every two years or so, but Jazz in the Lake is slated to occur February 22nd. Again, this is a fundraiser to support children's programs and collections at the Bonner Springs City Library. Tickets are available, so please go on up to the library and get your tickets there. There's also the ability to be a sponsor of varying levels as well, and you'll see those plaques actually at the library in the hallway there. So anybody that wants to do that will be, will get your name on the plaque. Also, just want to note, this has been something that we've been doing for the last couple of years, but haven't had a strong focus on leadership development within the Bonner Springs for the last, oh, like I said, the last couple of years, we've actually had four people go through the CPM program and, gosh, several go through the emerging leaders program through KU's Public Management Center. So this year, we're actually sending Chief Knapp through the Public Manager CPM program. Again, this is a, about 12-month program. Twice a month, we go through varying topics related to local government and all of the best practices involved. So kudos to him, that is a, he is selected from applicants, so this is a competitive process to get into that. Also, last but certainly not least, I did hear, I guess he's going to make an appearance next week, so I heard it, so it's got to happen now. We did get our, we did get our new canine, oh, it's been a couple of weeks now, selected. Chico is his name. He is a pretty dog, but he will be up here, not next week, our next council meeting, rather. He's also, I think, there's a nice little picture on Facebook, and then you'll also see them equipped in the Dodge Durango, canine vehicle, that, that is Chico's Durango. And then Scout is in the Explorer, so I'm not sure if that's tactical or I shouldn't let you all know that or not, but anyway.
He does play.
Yeah, does play, I don't know. But that's, again, Officer Gold has been selected as his handler after a process to select a handler. They'll be going through several months of, of training, actually, up in Minnesota. Beautiful time to be in Minnesota right now. But that's going on for what's?
Starts in March.
Starts in March, it might be a little more baloney there. Again, that's going to be a welcome addition. I will note too, that eventually we will be retiring Scout as part of this process. A timeframe to that hasn't necessarily been established, but that has been somewhat of the intention, is if this is a replacement animal. There are some programs going on, I'm not sure if I want to speak to them at this point, but we are looking at actually having some assistance with establishing another canine. Some folks have come forward about starting that process and then helping us fundraise to do that. So more to come on that. But again, I think it's a neat thing to draw attention to. But that'll stop landing and.
That's all, I'll just start over here with Mr. Reeves.
Sean, you've mentioned earlier about cleaning up after your animals to keep waste out of the water supply, and I know that in a perfect world, owners pick up after their pets at the canine park.
Right.
Do we actually have someone that has to go out and clean that park up?
Yeah, we have, Magnus will go through that. Unfortunately, we do encourage the use of the disposal bags that are conveniently located at the entry through the duck park and the disposal receptacle installed right there as well, but unfortunately, that's reality.
They have to put through all the parks. Can I just?
Yes. Within reason, yeah.
That one just happens to run off, traded in the creek, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're into earlier conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon? Mr. Reeves?
Yeah, one little comment. Businesses that are out in the, around the parking lot in the area that we did a tax insane out there around McDonald's, a little question on their upkeep, like, you know, but those tax dollars that we're giving to them at quarter cent, aren't they supposed to improve the property? My question about that is that, for instance, at the Dollar Tree, their restrooms have been closed for months. And I just think that the owner there needs to look into that, why that, that should be. I think in, in this country, businesses pretty much ought to have restroom facilities for their customers.
They're required to.
I said, I think they are. In this country.
I disagree with that.
I know that, you know, if you're serving food, you have to, but if there's restrooms there, I think they ought to be in working order. So you might just see what's going on with that maybe.
Yeah, the, the, the sit that is established up there, that's actually a payment that goes back to the developer at the time, so that's not necessarily money that's going directly to those businesses, but rather to the developer.
Understand that.
Yeah, so, so everybody else does as well. But I will see about the bathroom, so. No, that's, it might be.
And then ask Mr. Reeves?
That's it for now.
We'll switch right over here to Mr. Reeves.
Try to follow that one.
That's it? Mr. Reeves?
I wanted to thank the council and everybody for the new roads in Ward One, because we successfully had the first rainfall that actually went down the street instead of pooling in front of my house and the neighbors. We did have an ice skating rink this past icing, and it was great to actually watch the puddle water run down the street. And so I wanted to thank everybody in their part in approving the new street, bringing Ward One.
Just asking, I was going to say if Scout retires, I'm sure the mayor would love to have his picture taken at a council meeting with Scout, so. You need to make sure that's arranged for, for the area, you know, Chief Knapp. Okay. Also, what you were talking about with the employees being off on January 20th, that is the, the annual Martin Luther King celebration. That will take place on the January 20th at First Christian Church, 148 North Nelson Avenue, from 1 o'clock to 2 o'clock. Anybody who's interested, please attend. There is no charge. They would love to have you there. With that, I have nothing else. So, I get to do this in turn. 1 o'clock.